Comment tonight, even though not everyone is present. I am requesting that everybody come to council prepared for the meeting. If there's anything that needs to be settled outside of council, please do it. We are here for a business meeting. That's our purpose. And everybody's welcome to voice what they need to. Let's try to keep our business on the table as much as possible. Get through our meetings and expeditiously do the business of the city. And I will repeat that on Tuesday night, just for everyone to hear. Tomorrow night, or excuse me, next Tuesday, we do have a couple of things to consider. Talking to Patricia today, there will be a Habitat BBQ cook-off coming up again. And they will have a proposition coming forward on a resolution for a liquor license. Like she said, apparently getting a liquor license in the state of Alabama is harder than me becoming a doctor. So basically, it's one of those things, this is another step in that process. We will also have one for the Alamo property. So we apparently at this point have someone interested in restarting some type of restaurant in that area. So that will also be on the agenda tomorrow night. I don't think there should be any questions about that. We granted the liquor license for Habitat for the cook-off every year. The other one makes real sense because we would love to have a business in that empty storefront, especially a restaurant. So those will be two things you will be making a comment on. There will be one coming across for a rezoning issue that got a lot of play at the rezoning board meeting. A lot of comment, but just from one or two individuals. It involves a piece of property that the current owner of the property wants to expand the building on that property. And in the process, he wants to make that property whole because some of it does have residential. There is nothing to prevent him from doing that expansion of the commercial, even if we did not rezone the residential. So again, it's going forward. He can do what he wants to with his building. And a lot of the comments focused on not letting him do that. He's got commercial property. He can expand his building. But we've got to decide if we want to make the parcel whole and make it all commercial so that everything he's got within his purview falls under that classification.
If I might just say, I think I recall that one. He owns the residential property also.
Yes, he does also.
So it's not somebody else's residence.
Yes.
He owns the whole block, basically.
The other item will be our chief. If he decides to bring it on Tuesday, he won't know more by Friday. Basically, it's just a, I guess it's going to be in the form of resolution because he wants to do some adjustment on the scheduling and calculation of workouts. So again, an issue that's basically he would be presenting. And it would just be something we would have to look at and see if we agree with his recommendation. Which, you know, he's the person in charge. And I assume what he's doing is for the best interest of covering our city with police coverage.
Do we have a copy of the agenda yet?
No, sir. It is still in flux.
Okay.
He will have it tomorrow by the end of the day tomorrow. But they knew we were having this meeting here, so we didn't have to.
And we might want, is there anything, now, the last thing we're going to talk about, and I asked Dan Fleming to join us. Isaac David is proposing to buy another sliver of city property to make a piece that he wants to purchase. And his purchase is contingent number one on that purchase being approved, the other purchase going through. And the only thing we have to compare it to is the Ross Graham sale of a similar thing in the past. We are being offered $10,000 for this piece of property. We sold the last one for $5,000. It is connected to it, and Dan, that's what Dan handed you at your location. It will be something new to look over. But it's something please thoroughly consider. And if you have some questions, I know you haven't had a chance to read it from top to bottom, but now would be a good time to get those questions answered so we could actually hopefully move fairly rapidly through that at the meeting. It is a piece of property that in and of itself would possibly not develop on its own because of size. But combined with this, and this is the area that he has some commercial plans for, should he be able to pull the whole deal together. That's about all I'm going to say. Dan, any general comments he can clarify?
If you, I've given everybody a packet and we're asking the city council to please consider this purchase. It's a .5 acre piece of property adjacent to the 7.4 acres that Mr. David has under contract at the present time. We are also asking on March the first to rezone that 7.4 acres from residential to commercial. And I've included in here the tax records on both of those pieces of property, just for your information. And a drawing from his architect of what the shopping center will entail. Number of parking spaces, size of the anchor tenant store, and the two other areas. That property, the highest investment use the city determined was for commercial down through that area. So we need to purchase this piece of property. I had given Steve the appraisal that Ross Graham had done on a similar piece of property that's literally probably only 100 yards away from this piece of property back in 2017. And I've taken the comps that the appraiser used for that sale and included them on this sheet here. The average sale price for the last four sales of property similar to this was 32 cents, excuse me, 36 cents a square foot. And we're offering 46 cents a square foot on the 21,780 square foot piece of property we need, which comes to 10 cents more per square foot than the average. So we think we're offering a very fair price here. And certainly ask that y'all consider it. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer.
Dan will be present for the meeting, so.
Yes.
Does this property include the property we sold Ross Graham back last year?
No, sir. His is down the hill from this. This is right adjacent to Grantsville.
Is the shopping center area going to include that property we saw the wrong?
No, sir. He has approached us. He has a buyer for that property now, but it has not closed. If it does not close, we are interested in possibly proceeding with the purchase of that property also.
And to clarify, his offer is for the total property, what he bought from us, along with what he already possessed? So it's not just that sliver that we sold?
Have you already got tenants for these, this project?
We do not have tenants yet. We have to first get this approved before we can start recruiting tenants. Our goal is that the main tenant would be a grocery store. That's our hope. And we intend to pursue that.
Hey, there's probably 50 people in here that would approve of that.
I know my wife did.
I know, I get a weekly question, when are we going to get a grocery store? Except for the folks around me, they're going to say, not next to me.
Yeah. Progress comes at a cost, so.
Fortunately, I don't think there's any real, except maybe behind, is there anything residential?
Both the properties are residents on the property that, with the 7.4 acres, there is a home that that belongs to the people. We're buying that for the property. And that's in the request also for the rezon.
This looks like the project next door to the project Price High Tower is doing now?
It's, there's a gap in property between the entrance to Grantsville Crossing. This property, this is right down on the intersection of Pine Tree and Grantsville Crossing.
Pine View.
Pine View.
Yeah. So what he's working on now would be behind, is correct?
It would be up Pine View, in the front.
Right, I got you. Okay. I got you.
And again, he will be here should we have any additional questions during the meeting itself.
I'd like Price here if he could come to discuss it as well. If he's building houses and selling them right next door.
Yeah. I sent this same packet to Price today. And so if you had any questions, please contact me. He's very interested in seeing some commercial development there also.
Good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Spivey, would you like to pick up on a few of those? Yes, you. Okay. Excuse me. James had another moment. We will have Spire as another unfinished item. I had put out a question, would we have anybody here representing the company of any significance for the discussion?
Of any significance?
Just so happened, are you significant?
Yeah. Thank you all for taking the time to hear us out. I know it was tabled last week. We, you know, we have the ongoing pipeline project as part of our integrity management program. We are putting a 16 inch steel line. You've seen some of that activity going on. And we definitely want to be a good steward of your community. So that being said, we've made what we feel like is a fair offer. I know there's some concerns with the ball field itself and any impetus to parking traffic, ball field activities as it is. And I think we can, I think we can work well with that. You know, we don't, we don't have to open that whole thing up all at once. We can, we can, we can step it in there. We coordinate that with any athletic director you might have that's over the ball fields. You know, we'll be happy to offer up, you know, several loads of gravel. We'll dress the area up and leave it in a much better, much better way than what it's currently being used for, just a grass area right now. And we're open to any suggestions you might have as to what we can do to better serve the community. We're also asking for a small portion by the shooting range as well.
Counselors Spivey, I believe you had some questions at the last meeting.
Yeah, there was mainly, thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate you. I know there, we had some questions around the community about, alright, so we know we've got 25 foot permanent easement, and then we've got an additional 35 foot temporary easement. When you walk it off, that pretty much takes up a huge chunk of that parking lot. So the big question that was concerning, because ball season's getting ready to get cranked up. And if, I know you guys are here. If I'm forgetting anything, I want you guys to pipe up. Because I do have your list right here, and we'll go through it. Is, how long do you anticipate, I guess the big question is, how long do you anticipate your scope of work around the ball field going on for? And when do you plan on starting?
Well, start to stop, you know, we're estimating roughly a month to clear the area completely. That's to open the trench, weld the pipe, put the pipe in, and move forward. Hopefully, that's on the conservative side. Fully dressed and ready to reuse, you know, I would say a month, month to six weeks tops. But that being said, we, you know, we can coordinate and do halves. Make a tie-in in the middle, that sort of, you know, we can, we can, you know, we can be a little more fluid with our scheduling to accommodate your ball field.
And who would that, would the point of contact be you? Some of the people, the sports coordinators, they would reach out to you specifically?
Yeah, yeah. What I'll do is I'll coordinate a meeting directly with our on-the-site inspection.
Right.
And, you know, our inspectors are coordinating the entire, you know, coordinating the entire job as it goes.
Okay. And Irondale Baseball Community Met on Saturday, February 10th, to discuss the situation. Let's see here. We request that work on the parking lot begin after June 1st. That's what you guys are saying. And that is based on baseball season starting in, I'm sorry?
The end of March.
End of March. So obviously, if you guys are going, coordination is huge.
There's a copy of the proposal.
Sure, thank you, Stan. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If the work can't wait until June, we ask the following. Please restrict Spire to using only the parking lot along Roughness Road. If the ballpark area, if the ballpark has access to the rear inside parking lot, which I think you guys said y'all wanted also house some equipment there.
Yes.
If you guys could at least clear out of the rear inside parking lot, so we'll generally reduce the parking issue created by the pipeline work up front. So that's something to talk about. Please mandate that Spire install a fence around the construction area. We don't want kids falling in trenches or anything like that. This would help keep the kids off of the Spire work equipment. I know if I was a kid and I saw a dirt pile and a front loader, I'd be, yeah, got you. We requested the City of Irondale negotiate park improvements with Spire. So one thing, the monetary, you know, is great. Don't get me wrong, especially with the conversation that we were having a moment ago. But as opposed to just dollars, I know sometimes improvements that are made, you guys got the men, you guys got the machines. I would be curious to see, you know, what does labor look like as opposed to dollar amounts? So if, you know, 42 grand, that's great. But what can we do with some of your guys and some of the equipment to elevate the ballpark from its current status? That would be something I'd be interested in talking about.
Okay. Sure. Is there anywhere we can, we can talk about that tomorrow or?
Absolutely, man. Yeah. Were you the one who wrote the memo to us?
I was.
Okay, cool.
I believe I was.
I have it right in front of me. Cool, thank you, that's all I see.
So David, I haven't seen the report that you did. I know there was supposed to be a meeting Saturday and you referenced that there. Who attended that meeting?
This is, and I'll yield to Matt and Samantha, this is the Irondale Baseball. This is the group that's starting practice and.
And then tell us who was at the meeting, who was at the meeting?
It was the president. It was about, yeah. But the most important, there was a park president there, so Mike Pivens. There was a park treasurer there.
The park president?
Right.
Or baseball president?
Baseball park president, Mike Pivens. And Tony Person, the treasurer for the park. And then there were about a dozen other families present.
I know you all said you were going to post a recap of it, but I haven't seen that.
That's not public. We have our own group that, the people that are following will be posted.
So you're not sharing that with the city?
If people wanted to know, okay, but.
And that raises the question of who's running the park. Is it?
Yeah, we've got a kind of subtle issue.
We've got to settle that quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I know you brought that up last Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a group of folks that have gotten together that call themselves the baseball community. But there's been no appointment from the city, from my understanding. The city has a liability for the fields. There's a responsibility for fields, which, I'm sorry, I started to check your conversation, but it kind of allows you in. But I think, I think what Spire is willing to do, and I'm not sure what the registration. How many do you have registered so far for baseball?
I don't know.
Approximately.
It's like a week and a half, I don't know, what is it?
13 or 14.
Okay. So you have 13, 14 since I know the registration online at least opened January 1st.
No, it did not.
That's what it said. So anyway, so we had, according to the baseball coach last year, we had one team. I thought we had two teams last year out there.
Four teams last year.
Anyway, we've got to get a handle on that. We, the person that they're calling the baseball, the park president, has thus far failed to show for two meetings that we've requested. I'm just saying for you all, because ultimately you are responsible for liability, for, you know, making sure that things are done right. This council needs to get involved and take some action and give some direction. Otherwise, we just got a bunch of folks out there doing whatever.
Right. And that's, and I appreciate that, you know. You know, who has access and all that stuff definitely needs to be ironed out. Regardless of, I think, who we're, who we're talking about running whatever program there, I still think we know regardless of who's running it, we're still going to get into baseball season. So a lot of the concerns are still there in my, in looking to see what Spire could do as far as park improvements. Not necessarily for Irondale Baseball specifically, but just for a city, a city facility as a whole. Obviously, Irondale Baseball would benefit from that. But I'd be curious to see what other improvements might be able to happen as opposed to, you know, $40,000.
I had some conversation with them on that as well. I was up there this morning. I think all of the, let me just use the term baseball community, you know, be accommodated in a parking area on the backside.
Okay.
While this work is going on. Now, there does have to be, obviously it has to be parental responsibility.
Of course.
If you let your kid go jump in the trench, then, you know, shame on you.
Yeah.
But I think it would bring the parking around to the back. I think you all agreed to do some gravel and improve that. It was a little bit muddy from, you know, just the rain and all. I think that could be a huge improvement that could serve. And that's centrally located in the back. So regardless of what field you're on, you're within $50 to $100 with any playing field there, with the exception of the one that is remotely located.
Is this, is this contract that you gave us a copy of last week, is it with John DeRoue, I guess? Is that not still in effect? Is it staying?
It is still in effect. That's, that's.
That's what he's supposed to be.
People are saying it's hard, you know, for the field.
Well, but he is not one of the ones that they named, which is what I'm saying. It's just people out there doing different things. And you have an agreement, you have a legal agreement with someone to manage that process. And then you've got others, you know, with good intentions, I'm sure, but others out there doing different things. And it's going to fall back to you all.
So, so they need to get with this John DeRoue.
Well, the council needs to address it first, in my opinion. The council needs to look at that, address that, and give direction on where it needs to go.
Okay.
I mean, that is a legal bonding agreement that you all agreed to some years, a couple of years ago.
Like 2016, so it's in effect till 2019 with a two-year extension?
A 30-day out.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there are outs on it. But, but again, my point all along to you all, not just now, but for the past almost year now, has been that needs to be readdressed and see if, do you want to reaffirm it? Or do you want to change it? Or what, in fairness to everybody involved? But right now, when everybody's in charge, nobody's in charge. And that's what we got right now.
Okay. Matt?
I've seen the contract. So the contract that y'all are given, that John entered into with the city, had to do with travel baseball. He gets groups from Mountain Brook and Vestavia and Trossfall and kind of the best of all these different worlds. And they pay a lot of money to be on his travel team. They lease out the field and they use it outside of rec ball time. And they've been doing that for a while now. It's not, it hasn't ever interfered with community-run Irondale rec ball. Community-run Irondale rec ball has been going on for 35 years with various people who've been in charge that have been elected by the community. But there hasn't been any conflict between the travel ball guy and the rec ball people.
And I'm going to pause for just one second, Matt. I think regardless, whoever's playing ball out there, I'm sure these concerns that was brought up would apply to whichever organization. So I want to thank you for bringing those up. But definitely would like to continue the conversation with you if I could. Do we have any additional contracts?
I agree, if we, the mayor could have a card also, potentially if you don't have one already.
Have one.
One is card.
Yeah, I have a contract.
Okay. And may I have one? And since that is in your district, you're kind of pushing it forward. Would you stay on it?
Yeah, no, I'll call tomorrow.
Let me have one as well, please.
Thank you.
Is there a better time of the day to call you, or are you wide open all the time?
I'll make that.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Did you guys have any other specific questions for him from Spire in regards to some of the stuff you outlined before I let him have a go?
One question. Will all the trees need to be taken out to put the pipe in? Or is that something you go under?
She's asking about trees having to be cut down at the front?
Just curious.
That was, that was, you're talking about the ones that were cut down already or?
We're talking along the front of the park that would be inside that easement.
Yeah, I'll have to look, look back over that. But I think there was a couple of trees that would need to be removed, best to my recollection.
Could you guys maybe put a little spray paint on them, like a dot or an X or something like that? Just so we could see which ones you were, obviously don't put an X on there to indicate they get cut down, but some sort of marker or maybe a tie around it just so we can, we can know which ones you're thinking?
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
But yeah, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming tonight. You think you'll be able to join us again on Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, just in case anything else comes up.
The main meeting will be at 6:30.
6:30, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
But no, I agree, we do need to take a look at that contract, you know. Whether, whether we decide on it, we put it on the agenda for this Tuesday, or whether we continue to talk about it.
And we apparently, since, if you don't mind, since you're kind of moving along with that, and we're not making decisions here, this is the work session.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it looks like we need to coordinate with whoever it is calling themselves the association because they have nothing with the city. And yet they're utilizing city property and the associated liability without having any quote authority from the council.
And I would suggest that you, that you reach out to John DeRoue and ask him to attend as well. He currently has responsibility, currently, as you've agreed, has responsibility for the fields. He's also put in a proposal to run the rec league, which is less expensive, his proposal is, than what has been happening. But I think you, you know, it'd be good for you if somebody not even laid eyes on him. So it'd be good for you to see how, to hear from him as well.
Do you have a phone number for him?
We can get that one.
Okay. So you've got it. You got it. Matt?
Yep, all right.
Now, I'm not, you know, I know that I've, this Spire situation, the baseball fields in my district, I'm not trying to say I want to take point on necessarily the contract. I think that that's something we've got to talk about as a group. And we're missing two people right now, one of which is involved in parks and rec. You know, so, you know, I don't want to dive into the weeds on that, you know, tonight. But we do need to get clarification on that.
We just need to get off the ground so we can move forward.
I will be reaching out to the gentleman on Spire so we can, you know, get a little bit more into the nuts and bolts of what we might be able to get done for the, for the facility.
Did you want to mention quiet zone?
Yeah. So quiet zone, I know it's been a few years since, since that's been brought up. You guys familiar with quiet zone topic? Show of hands? Okay, cool. So what we're talking about doing is eliminating the ability for the train to blow the horns at this intersection right behind us here, where 20th crosses over into the north side of Irondale. There's a lot of economic drivers that, that really like quiet zones. I do not mind, I'm just going to throw it out there, I do not mind the trains. I like the trains. Occasionally, they wake me up at 2 o'clock in the morning when an engineer decides to pull his horn for 45 seconds. But that is rare. I don't mind them. My kids don't mind them. This is not, this is not a Dave thing, okay? This is, this is businesses that, when you survey, say, I'll probably lose two hours a day asking my clients, "Please hold on." Okay? This is about attracting businesses that don't necessarily know Irondale's history. They don't know our culture, but will potentially be interested in bringing new business to Irondale. To them, the trains are, who wants to say, let's say to Devil's Lab, can we bring a burger joint into downtown Irondale? Maybe we approve a liquor license. I personally have no problem sitting on the back porch of some nice establishment, maybe having a 12 ounce of some particular beverage. If I, if I do not know Irondale, but I came specifically to Irondale to enjoy that type of thing, the train horns would probably be an issue for me. So we, me and Telus in the chamber, we've gone all down First North, surveyed, you know, did a survey of pretty much every business down there. Very little opposition with it, okay? The scenario that would play out is we would turn, once you cross, so we're on 20th Street here, at First South, so this T-bone where you have to make a left or right anyways when a train's sitting on the tracks, would become a one-way going north into, into the north side. It would then become a two-way again. Once you cross over the tracks and you're on basically First North, you could turn, you could turn left or right. Right, you go down towards Roughness or Mountain Road. Left to go into the Irondale Cafe and those shops and stuff like that. It would continue to be a one-way until you hit Second North. Okay? So if you're coming from Third North, you can come south, but you would have to make a left or a right. The big issue with that was the money aspect. So when it was originally being talked about, there was about a $30,000 light bulb that had to be installed. You know, Norfolk Southern has gone ahead and done that for us. So you can pretty much take that cost out of the equation. I've spoken with a gentleman from the Federal Railroad Administration who basically helps municipalities with this. Norfolk doesn't like it. They're very abrasive to it. Obvious reasons. Trains are inherently dangerous. People do die when they make bad decisions to try to outrun a train. Horns are there to obviously give warning. So I know there is a public safety thing. But if we, we have to block the left-hand lane, okay? As long as the right lane is open, we need one gate to fall. And then the left-hand lane on both sides would be blocked by some sort of fixed barrier that can't be tampered with. That is where our costs live. We can do it cheaply and, you know, make it look like a construction zone. Throw some Jersey berries out there, call it a day, we got a quiet zone. I do not like that. I want it to look good. So there is some opportunity to maybe put some, some feelers out there in the community to say, "Hey, give us a rendering of what you think this could look like." Once we make a decision that everybody agrees on, we can then submit it to Sane. Sane draws it up and says, "Okay, in order to make these improvements, the intersection, your cost is X." That's where the money is at. So I am actively pursuing the quiet zone. That's basically really what I wanted to say about it, is just know that we can have a quiet zone quickly and very cheaply, but I want to do it right. So those are the options that we've decided is to turn if we do go forward with this turn of this street into a one-way going into the north side. Norfolk Southern would love for us to just close the intersection completely. Norfolk Southern would love for us to just close the intersection completely, but I think that would be extremely bad news for industry on that side of the hill. Cal?
Would that allow for fire protection up there?
Yes, I'm, as far as if the quiet zone works, I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure if they could go the wrong way, but I mean, they would be able to go up the hill into the north side. The only problem would be is if they were in the north side and got a call and had to go southbound.
Would that matter fire and police both?
Not, not a hundred percent sure on that. I mean, thankfully, we've got a workaround, but yes, I do understand that could cost a minute, which could make a difference, but I don't know the answer to that, I can find that out.
Yeah.
I know in most cases, emergency, they don't necessarily have to obey the laws.
Also true, but at the same time, time is life and death.
No, I agree with you, I agree with you completely. That's a question I can answer.
Well, we could give the police and fire the exemption on that one-way.
We could.
As long as it's not any overcome the traffic.
Yeah, we could. And some of the pushback, was received pushback from one company over there, they're like, well, I can cross that, you know, I can cross that track about twenty-five percent of the time. When I look at how many clients I serve, and I say, okay, what's twenty-five percent of that? There were some growing pains around not being able to cross the track twenty-five percent of the time, but I received very little pushback from the industry on that side of the track. So, that was, I was expecting to hear more pushback on it, but we received very positive feedback on it, so. That's what I have to say about that. And you'll be able to move into the other one?
You're welcome to.
Okay, I appreciate you. So, wanna take a look at ordinance that we have on the books, and I'm sure this will probably get a little bit of chuckles, but that's okay, because I like it, and I think a lot of other people would like it. I wanna take a look at allowing chickens in Irondale, okay? We've, I've already sent multiple ordinances from neighboring municipalities that allow chickens to our city attorney to begin crafting a resolution. The pushback that I received most recently is not only is it an existing ordinance, there's also a zoning issue. So, we've gotta take a look at the zoning, because right now, the zoning says only A1 can have chickens, so not only do we have to look at changing the zoning, it's not only say A1, but also includes some residential zoning, then we have to get around to change the ordinance, which is an easy one. So, that will be hopefully going through planning and zoning pretty soon. Mountain Brook allows chickens, they've got a really good ordinance out there, I know several municipalities around us allow chickens. There's, there's, there's a market for people that, that want to, that wanna have them, and that will specifically look at municipalities, and you could probably speak to this a little bit, you know?
The covenants and restrictions, and most of the new subdivisions out, do not allow...
Right, and that is something that I would omit, is I would give, I would give HOAs the ability to opt out from that and make their own decisions, that's a hundred percent correct. One, one thing, yeah, because I mean, that houses, you can barely, you can't, you can't walk between them in some places, you know, so that would obviously make sense.
I've got a HOX directly behind me, and that's what I think.
I'm sorry?
There's an HOX there, if you're right behind me.
Yeah.
If I put them in my backyard, then I've got those people.
I don't wanna get too much into the weeds because we're crafting the ordinance, I'm just letting you guys know it's on my mind.
Okay.
All right? And I wanted to kind of bring this up so that we can talk about it if there were any questions, because as you know, we can't openly talk about this stuff, so look for opportunities to do so. But I think there's a lot of municipalities out there that do it, and there's a lot of people out there that look for it. So, I think if done right with the training components, I think that it could be done very well.
And, you know, Mountain Brook, you have to be careful, because they also allow goats.
Really?